I'm as with us as a willow in no wind storm. I'm as jumpy as a puppet on a string. I'd say that I had spring fever, but I know it isn't spring. I am starry-eyed and vaguely discontented, like a nightingale without a song to sing. Oh, why should I have spring fever when it isn't even spring? I keep wishing I were somewhere else, walking down a strange new street.
Meeting for June 14th, 2002. Madam Clerk, would you call them, please?
Absolutely. Commissioner Thompson?
Here.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Here.
Commissioner Barton?
Here.
Thank you.
Here. That brings us to preliminary matters. Action on the review of the following minutes and resolutions. First one are the draft minutes of May 17, 2012. Are there any additions or corrections? Madam Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Schwartz. Thank you, Madam Chair. And I know this was a lot of work for Ms. Rodriguez, so I appreciate that. I believe that under my comments in paragraph one on page three, I referenced in my comments two additional items. One was that I identified that the roundabout, or proposed roundabout, some years back at Olive Mill and Coast Village Road was absent from the draft DIR. And I saw a 2005 letter from Caltrans to the Montecito Association, in essence, committing to studying that with the city and the county. So I'd like to see that back in the environmental documents. And then, in addition to that, I had suggested that a design review task force be immediately reconvened with appropriate community stakeholders in order to make sure that we have all the right people at the table looking at the aesthetics, impacts, et cetera. Thank you.
Any other additions, corrections?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Bartlet.
Going back to the minutes of May 17th, on page four, the straw vote in the middle of the page under "Community Benefit Process," where it says the preference for option two, I think it would be good to reiterate in the minutes what that was. Option two was city council only being the review for the allocation of the community benefit at a public hearing. There were many other options, so I think just for clarity, it would be good to state what that option was. And then on page five, under the "Community Benefits," projects that exceed 45 feet, there was additional discussion, and I don't know if this wants to be listed as item four, but that projects would remain under the same purview as under the current system. In other words, projects can either go to the ABR, they can go to the HLC, they can go to staff hearing, officer plus either ABR or HLC, depending on where they're located, or they go to planning commission plus ABR and HLC. And that we weren't changing that, forcing all projects to come to planning commission. So somehow that comment doesn't seem to be showing up in here, and I think it should be pointed out that the purview of the project does not change. Thank you.
Okay, on that, any other comments or conclusions? On that same part of the minutes, Kellum DeForest was here, as I recall, and wanted to see and commented that neighbors were not notified, and as I recall, on community benefit projects. And as I recall, Betty Wees said that that was true, but that they could be. And I think that would be important, that that be included. Okay? Anything else?
Madam Chair, I'll be abstaining from the May 17 minutes since I was absent.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Schwartz.
And Madam Chair, I will be abstaining from the portion of the minutes when I left at 4:30. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, then on those minutes, is there a motion to approve as corrected, amended?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the minutes as corrected and amended. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, so that brings us to, are there any requests for continuances, withdrawals, postponements, or addition of ex-agenda items, Mr. Cawthorne?
None of those things.
Thank you. Any announcements and appeals?
Just continuing announcement that the city council will hear the appeal of the 1085 Coast Village Road gas station project, but the appeal will be heard on June 26th, and we're hoping that Commissioner Larson can be their representative. I can't remember exactly what your schedule is, whether you're back by then.
You know, I'll have to check my calendar at home. Somewhere in there, I have a big, giant doctor appointment, but I'll see if I can be there. If I can't, I know that Chair Lodge also is interested in it, so between the two of us.
Next week, we'll find out.
Yeah, I'll let you know by email. Thank you.
That brings us to item 2D, which is the time for comments from members of the public to any items pertaining to items not on this agenda. Is there anyone who wish to speak about some other issue?
No, Madam Chair? This isn't really an issue, but I just wanted to let everyone know that my husband and I completed the community emergency response training, and it was wonderful, a wonderful thing to do. And I want to encourage everyone to consider at least investigating this, and if you're able to do, take the time, because the concept that we can become a disaster-resistant community is a strong one. And I think that with so many of our first responders living away from Santa Barbara, we certainly owe it to ourselves to be prepared. So stay tuned, because I'll have more information. Thank you.
All right, that brings us to item three, which is an environmental hearing, South Coast 101 HOV Lanes Project Draft Environmental Impact Report. So, Mr. Cawthorne?
Thank you, Chair Lodge. This is a continuation of the May 31 hearing. Caltrans is here with a presentation to provide more detail on the interchange configurations and some points of clarification from items that came up at the last hearing. I just want to remind the public again that the purpose of this hearing is to get a comment from the planning commission on Caltrans document, and if the public has comments that they want addressed in the context of SEQA, those comments should be directed to Caltrans.
All right.
Scott Eads will be in.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the commission. I'm Scott Eads with Caltrans, and I'm going to walk through part of the slides here, and then Greg Hart from SB CAG will walk through the remaining slides. So the purpose from our perspective today is to just clarify a few items that we heard from the last commission meeting in terms of some issues that came up or questions that there's desired clarification at this meeting, and so we'll be doing that. And then also, what we talked about at the last meeting was a number of photo simulations from the draft environmental document to just provide a bit more of a visual implications associated with the five interchange configurations at Hot Springs-Cabrio. So as we understood it largely today, we'll be focusing on the Hot Springs-Cabrio interchange, just kind of larger conceptual dislikes and likes of the proposals, and that might help shape some of your comments. So we'll provide some information to help that. So this is the overview of the points we're going to try to clarify. Number one is proposed medium planters. Second is there is a request to provide additional information in terms of Olive Mill and Coast Village Road operations at that intersection. Left side ramps, just some general information on how we came to those decisions, and local participation on design details. And then, as I mentioned, photo simulations related to the Hot Springs-Cabrio interchange So this slide, I just want to clarify, in terms of medium planting, all the interchange configurations would provide for medium planting throughout, within the interchange itself. Some of those would vary in terms of the width of that planter or the area that could be planted, but all of them do provide medium planting with all the five proposed interchange configurations. And then in regard to the area just north, or I'm sorry, just to the south of that, that's still within the city jurisdiction, would be Route 101 within, near the Olive Mill interchange. And it's a bit more complicated there in terms of the fact that the road enters a curve, and in doing so, there's stopping site distance constraints that, and what that means is it's the area that would be required from a design standpoint to make sure that there's adequate visual connection with the roadway ahead of you, so that if a ladder falls off of a truck, you're able to see it in time to stop before you would run into it and cause an accident, or something else that's in the roadway. So that's basically what the stopping site distance criteria is about. So in designing facilities or modifying facilities, we need to adhere to that. And so the reality within the Olive Mill area is that we couldn't put in the medium planter within that area because of the stopping site distance constraint without realigning 101. And in order to do that and accommodate the medium planting, the engineering analysis shows, based on our preliminary work, that you would also need to realign Coast Village Circle, which would then impact the businesses along Coast Village Circle. So the project as proposed doesn't accommodate medium planting near the Olive Mill interchange, and that's due to the constraints that we have there. So a couple slides here on Olive Mill and Coast Village Road intersection operation. So this is information from the technical studies that's available for public review, and there's a lot of information here, so I'll try to walk through this. I'll use the pointer on the mouse here. So this is the first box, so these are three actually, in terms of the intersection analysis that was done for the project, it was broken into three separate intersections. That's how you would do the analysis, because it's a bit of a funky intersection, as we know, that there's different legs that come into this space. So for the purposes of analysis, that's done, you break it into three separate intersections. So Olive Mill and northbound off-ramps is one, that was intersection 39 in the technical studies, traffic studies. And then Olive Mill and North Jamison Lane is intersection 39A, and then Olive Mill and the southbound on-ramp is intersection 40. So existing conditions, and this was the conditions from the traffic studies that were done in 2008, and these are based on actual counts. Oh, now I've lost my mouse.
Just move it.
Want to go on some more? Oh, there we are, okay. So this is broken down by AM peak and PM peak, and this is peak hour analysis. So what this is showing you is that level of service D in the AM and C and B respectively, and this is the intersection delay, or the seconds of delay associated with each one of these. So the delay really drives the level of service number here. And for the PM peak, we see C, B, and B. And then moving out to 2020, no build condition, so this is under the scenario where the project would not be constructed, but traffic volumes continue to grow. We have level of service moving into level of service D, so the seconds increase by about four seconds there, which pushes you over into level, well, I guess there are already a level of service D there. And then here, a couple more seconds delay, and then here, about four seconds additional delay. PM peak, you can see that it's pretty similar, except for the intersection delay increases substantially here, Olive Mill and the southbound on-ramp moves you into level of service D. So build conditions with the project are characterized here, and what we did is we color-coded these based on where in the future build scenario, and again, this is broken down by the interchange configuration, how that would vary by interchange configuration with the proposed build conditions. And so the yellow coding means that there's increase in delay, and the green coding means that there's a decrease in delay, so the conditions would improve versus a slight deterioration or deterioration of conditions. So what you see here is that the no build condition is, so again, this is the comparison between no build and build. No build condition here is 35 seconds, that goes down to 26 seconds in the AM, this is with F and F modified. And I'm not going to characterize all of the improvements, you can see those here. And then there's the ones that do deteriorate are the ones that are shown in yellow here, and what we had is level of service B before with 11 seconds of delay, and that we have one second delay added for each one of those three locations there, for each of the interchange configurations. So as you can see, on the whole, there's an improvement, and then there's on some, on one leg, there is one second decrease or increase in delay. Now, moving to 2040 conditions, it's a slightly different picture. I'll focus just on these. And you can see that in the no build condition, in the AM peak, this particular intersection goes to level of service F, there's 77 seconds delay that occurs there. That's the worst of all of those. There's also a level of service F down here. And with the project, what you can see is that in the AM peak with F and F modified, you improve the delay, or the delay is reduced by approximately 40 seconds there, moves you up into a level of service E. That's the same is true down here, where you move, improve it by about 20 seconds of delay, and you moves you into level of service E from an F. And then there is a couple legs here that deteriorate, and that is, you have an increase of 10 seconds of delay here in the PM peak, and four seconds of delay increase here that moves you into level of service C. So as you can see here, there is a trade-off, and it does vary by interchange configuration. And so with F and, I'm sorry, M and M modified, it is slightly greater degradation of these two locations, especially actually one location with M and M modified. So again, I'm presenting this information as a response to a desire to have that information Moving on to left side ramp topic, so this is basically to clarify again our process that we've gone through in terms of left side ramp, and the conclusion that the left side ramp cannot be retained. And again, going back to our initial process, we heard from city staff, as well as meetings through the Montecito Association and others, that there is a desire to do the least amount that we can with this interchange in terms of changes, specifically speaking to the Hot Springs-Cabrio interchange. And so we looked at 19 different configurations, many of those which would have retained left side ramp configurations. And ultimately, we, through a series of design reviews and screening processes, we came to the conclusion that the configurations that retained the left side ramps were not approvable as part of this project. From Caltrans perspective, it's not something that can be approved, it's not a viable long-term solution for this interchange. And I also wanted to clarify too, this came up last time, that a design exception is required for a left side ramp. So at the onset, that condition alone requires a design exception. And then there's a number of other non-standard features that exist on both of these left side ramps that currently exist there now that would also require further design exception. So that puts us into that design exception process. Just wanted to make sure we're on the same page with that. Okay, next slide just talks about where we've been and where we're going here. Again, we have, the notice of preparation for the environmental document was released in spring 2009. Public scoping meetings were held around the same time. We released a draft environmental document on March 23 of this year. Public hearings were held in April, and then the comments are all due on July 9. And there's one sound wall within the city of Carpinteria, as we mentioned before, and that we would be doing sound wall voting for that particular sound wall. That means that we do a poll of the residents that would be benefited by that sound wall, and if over 50% of the residents do not want that, then we would not be providing it. That will occur later this year. And then, looking ahead to the design process after we, so then as a project development team, as we discussed before, we would be selecting a preferred alternative that would occur in the fall of this year, most likely late summer, fall, and then we move into the final environmental document, that is our expectations, again, unless there's a need to recirculate and issuing a supplemental and then recirculation. And that will be based on the comments received and whether there's a need for us to do that. And then we move into the design review team process from our perspective, in that we would be working through submittal of an application for a local coastal permit, and that's where we would be talking in much more detail through a series of meetings in terms of aesthetic features for sound walls and for retaining walls and barriers and other features. So just, I wanted to speak ahead to the fact that there's a lot of detail as the design of the project evolves, after we've selected a preferred alternative, that there's a lot more work ahead of us with the design review team, really poring over plans and making slight adjustments, and where there's room to make adjustments, we certainly will. And that will also include planning, plan, development, and approval, as well as aesthetic features and refinements, structures, design, aesthetics as well. And then I'll go through these again briefly, I think we're all pretty familiar, but I'll run through it just to familiarize ourselves with the five interchange configurations that we discussed last time, and then I'll turn it over to Greg to walk through the photo simulations that are in the document. So start with configuration F, and this configuration, again, provides for a, and I'll just basically talk about how the local street connections occur with the freeway. So this would provide a single off-ramp into Hermosillo, and that's the only off-ramp in the northbound direction. And then on all configurations, the northbound off-ramp is in the same location. And then in the southbound with the F configurations, the ramps occur to, in the northbound side would come into, directly into Cabrillo between the freeway and the railroad. And there would always be an on-ramp connection as well, and this would occur in this space here as well. There are several retaining walls proposed with all of the configurations, and I can point out the heights and lengths of the retaining walls if there's a desire to do so. As you can see, there's retaining wall here, having much luck with this mouse. Okay, there's retaining wall here, as well as over here, and on the adjacent to the southbound on-ramp. Next configuration. Next configuration is configuration F modified. And it's similar to the last. The primary difference is that, in terms of the local street connections, is that Hermosillo is left open. And then there is a second northbound off-ramp into Cabrillo. On-ramp is in the same location, and the ramps are in the same location in the southbound direction that I just mentioned. There is additional retaining walls because the two, the two main line structures need to move closer together, and there's retaining walls because of additional ramp, accommodating the additional ramp in the northbound direction here. Configuration J is similar to F in the northbound direction. There, the primary off-ramp in the northbound direction is at Hermosillo. And then the on-ramp is in the same location as I mentioned. Now, as we move into the next three, we have configuration J, M, and M modified, that all have the primary ramps at Los Potos. So the off-ramp would occur here, on-ramp here, and there would need to be the, the railroad structure would need to be, the profile of the railroad would need to be increased by approximately four feet to accommodate adequate vertical clearance here underneath that structure. And so there would need to be a shoe fly constructed for the railroad and then ultimate placement of a new railroad structure. Configuration M is the same as the other in the southbound direction that I just mentioned with J. And then in the northbound direction, we close Hermosillo, and we end up with a primary off-ramp at Cabrillo and the on-ramp at Cabrillo as well. And then final configuration is M modified. Same connections here in the southbound direction at Los Potos. And in the northbound direction, this is similar to F modified, in that Hermosillo is left open. We have an off-ramp at Cabrillo and then an on-ramp at Cabrillo in that same location. So with that, I'll turn it over to Greg, and he can walk through the photo simulations.
Mr. Hart?
I'm sort of pinching for Dave Emerson from Caltrans, who is the landscape architect who helped put together these view simulations. So I'll do the best I can. I think it's important to recognize that these are really an art, not a science. There's a certain amount of discretion involved in creating these. And the default position for preparing these was to show the landscaping as it would be about five years after construction of the project. So you're going to see planting that isn't going to ultimately be as lush as it will ultimately be, because it's fairly young. This map shows you the different observer viewpoints that we're going to walk through in the corridor. We're not going to do all of those, but we're going to start with number 20, which is right here. This is looking from the Olive Mill over crossing, looking north toward the City of Santa Barbara. This is the existing condition. And this is the condition of all three alternatives that are being proposed, because as Scott described earlier, there isn't sufficient space because of the turn in this corner to provide site-stopping distance. So there isn't any median planting proposed here. But you can see that the difference between the previous picture, there are lots of opportunities to provide additional landscaping on the outside shoulders. You know, the landscaping out there, in some cases, like over here, is pretty generous and robust, but there are large sections where the landscaping hasn't done very well that we're able to address with improvements. Thanks, Danny. I think I almost make it. Oops. What did I do? Go back up to slideshow. This is just a placeholder slide to tell you that we're moving to the Hot Springs-Cabrio intersection. These are the different alternatives that Scott just showed you. And here's the observer viewpoint. We're on the main line itself, looking east of the Cabrillo Boulevard interchange, excuse me, looking northbound. So we're just coming upon the fast lane off-ramp there. So you're in the northbound direction, you're looking toward the City of Santa Barbara. That is the fast lane off-ramp right there that's in front of you, and then the two lanes of the freeway on the right. And this is configurations F and J. As you recall, neither F or J have the additional off-ramp in the northbound direction that would be replacing the fast lane off-ramp. And both F and J use Hermosillo as the only off-ramp in the northbound direction. This is M, F modified. This is the new off-ramp that we just talked about, that goes and links up with the existing on-ramp at Hot Springs-Cabrio. This is M and M modified, which have the new off-ramp as well. But in this case, there's more room for median planting because of the use of Los Potos as the southbound on and off-ramp. Then moving to a different observer viewpoint, this is a little bit further north than the previous location, and it's actually looking from Coast Village Road, or excuse me, Old Coast Highway, back toward the Cabrillo Bridge. And these are the legs of the roundabout that come down toward the on-ramp. Here's the freeway on-ramp over here. Here's the Cabrillo Bridge. And this, the roundabout would be up here in this section, a little bit off the screen, so you're coming down that way. So the F and J would just have additional width here, and the on-ramp is also widened as well, to provide for additional capacity to the cars that would be coming from Hermosillo and using the roundabout, as opposed to going left off the freeway. And then this is the same for both F modified, M, and M modified. This is the new off-ramp that you saw from the freeway itself, the main line, is going off and matching up with the on-ramp here. There's the Cabrillo Bridge structure in the background. And there's obviously room for additional planting. You can see even this landscaping here doesn't look very well established. This photograph was taken just about immediately after the construction of the roundabout. So the plants that are actually out there now are much more robust and filled in than what you can see in this picture. Moving to the other side of the freeway, it's almost a mirror image of where we were. This is at the Los Potos off-ramp. This is the existing condition, looking back toward the railroad bridge. And this is what F and F modified would do, because all it basically does is close that off-ramp and provide an opportunity for some planting back there. And then J, M, and M modified use this Los Potos off and on-ramp as the primary access point for Montecito. So cars coming to Hot Springs-Cabrio would be getting off here, and folks going, southbound on the freeway would be going this way. This fence is shown as an unmitigated barrier. The actual mitigation for that unsightly fence is a much more ornate, appropriately styled barrier there. This is on the main line again, just looking west of Cabrillo Boulevard, looking southbound. So if you're, this is the fast lane off-ramp, left-hand off-ramp for Hot Springs-Cabrio. Because you're just a little bit past the gore point here, where the two separate from the main line. And this is what it would look like with configuration F, the additional lane for the freeway, and actually the off-ramp coming back this way. This is some landscaping. You don't quite see the off-ramp as well as you do, because the difference between F and F modified is that the F modified is required to move a little bit further to the south, or I guess that would be toward the ocean side anyway. So there's less room for landscape planting here in this gory area, separating the main line from the off-ramp. This is configuration J, where there's still, you know, all the off-ramp is back here, further back at Los Potos. So there's lots of room in the median between the two structures for landscaping. Similarly, M and M modified, there's not quite as much space as there is with J, but there's still larger room for planting. And then finally, the last location is on the main line, looking southbound, again, moving further toward the City of Santa Barbara. So we're a little bit further north than the previous location. The off-ramp that we were just on is up here, a little bit further. And this is what F would look like, with the off-ramp going on the right-hand side. This is the railroad, the elevated gravel bed of the railroad. And you can see that there's room for median planting to a point there with this option. This is F modified, the same situation as before. It's been moved a little bit further toward the ocean and requires a little bit more retaining structure here. And then J, M, and M modified, this would be the beginning of the new on-ramp coming from Los Potos and the retaining wall that would be required to have that on-ramp in that location. So with that, both Scott and I are available to answer any additional questions that you have, or hear any comments that you have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hart. All right, questions for Mr. Eads or Mr. Hart? Commissioner Thompson?
I have a question for either Scott or Greg on that issue, which, in the discussions on the Olive Mill intersections with Jamison and the on-ramp and off-ramp, what could be done to improve that terrible projection of level of service? Would that necessitate building a roundabout, or how could we fix that?
Mr. Eads?
So in terms of that intersection, I think from the project's perspective, there isn't anything proposed at that location. We see it as there's trade-offs, and the degradation of level of service that you see there is just, for the large part, associated with just traffic volumes growing over time. It's another one of these situations that it's not an ideal location in terms of interchange or an intersection configuration. And I think right now, the perspective of the project team associated with this project is that this team would be happy to coordinate with any project that would be moving forward in that location.
But it would be a city project. It wouldn't be something that would be associated with this particular Caltrans project.
As it stands right now, it's not proposed as part of this project.
And a follow-up, when you did your traffic count analysis, does that look at the traffic on Coast Village Road using the southbound on-ramp as it exists today? Or was that based on some analysis done prior to the previous phase of the 101 work? And the reason that I ask that is that I know when we looked at the previous phase, it was assumed that a lot of the traffic was going to get on 101 at Garden Street or Milpus. But it appears that that's not quite working out, and much of that traffic is queuing up on Coast Village Road and using the Olive Mill southbound on-ramp. So are those numbers and that level of service current numbers for today, or were they based upon some assumptions a couple of years ago?
So the project analyzed what would be the condition after Milp's Hot Springs improvements were fully in place. And so there was a baseline condition that looked at what would be the baseline after the changes that occurred. And then there was diversion rules that were established by the project development team, traffic subcommittee, which included city staff, to basically make working assumptions about what would be the diversion if this configuration were to occur versus the other configuration. And that's what you see in terms of the differences in level of service there. So it did, we did the best we could in terms of taking into account what would be the future conditions. And again, the project would be re-establishing a southbound on-ramp. That's what has changed in recent years, is the fact that the on-ramp has been closed with the Milp's Hot Springs project at Cabrillo. And so this would be re-establishing.
So basically, it was an analysis based on some assumptions was going to come, but it's not based on actual traffic counts done since the project was completed?
I believe that that's correct, yes.
Is there any plans to do any re-evaluation based upon what's happened since the previous phase has been completed? Because from an anecdotal point of view, it appears that the public isn't following the model. You know, they're going where they want to go, and they're queuing up on Coast Village Road instead of going up Milpus and getting on there.
Well, according to our, you know, our traffic folks, we feel like those studies are valid, but that's certainly a comment that the city could provide. And if there's real concerns there, then we'd take that comment into consideration and perhaps revisit some of that analysis if we needed to.
Okay, thanks. And I hope that Mr. Dayton's taking notes also.
Mr. Dayton?
Okay, Madam Chair, I just want to make sure it's really clear for you, as clear as it can be, on the levels of service. So you're looking at, when it says intersection over on the left, that, that has three intersections, but I think Scott was trying to tell you that there's certainly only one intersection. The reason it's broken down into three is because there's not a program, we don't have a program to input the data appropriately, because this intersection doesn't show up.
I understand that.
This dot com is not very usual. So it's really hard to look at these numbers and understand what the level of service really is. It's better just to go out there and experience it for yourself. When we work back in the office with numbers, what we're really trying to do is replicate your experience and describe it with numbers. That way, we can do it in the future, and you can have an understanding of how it's going to change. So in this case, it's really hard to do. All these movements that are going through the intersection conflict with one another, and that's why we get a lot of ambiguity in the intersection and driver misunderstanding about who's next, which adds to the delay. We can, if everyone just knew who was next, we could probably increase the level of service tremendously. I don't know how we do that. But so for us, the concern, you know, our representation has been, in all of our studies, has been LOSF for this intersection. And so when we see the projects coming forward and adding more traffic to it, we're in the area, this is an interchange, this is a freeway interchange. It's our belief that we need to fix this problem of having a new improved freeway without access to it is fundamentally wrong for us. The question you were asking about in terms of, now we've completed the freeway from Milpus to Cabrillo, what difference does it make in terms of analysis? For this intersection, not much. But we did point out at the last hearing, and maybe you remember, is for the Cabrillo intersection, it makes a lot of difference because the previous condition was really bad, now we've made it really good. Now it's level of service A right now. You go out there, it's level of service A. We've gotten rid of the southbound on-ramp, which was another draw for traffic through the area, which to most extent is not happening. Actually, the adjustment that you talked about, is the public following the model? That's gradually happening. Our volumes are going down over time on Coast Village Road. It is very gradual. We are concerned about measuring a very poor level of service in the past to a poorer level of service in the future, when in fact, it's now we've got A, and we're moving toward a D in the future. And that seems like it's a big difference. So that is one comment we're making, and that's important to us. Hope that helps.
Mr. Jordan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Rob, if you could re-educate me again on level of service. So I know this one's an aberration, but if it was just an off-ramp coming to an intersection, and Caltrans does a traffic study that comes up with a level of service, is the level of service just for the Caltrans off-ramp, or is the level of service also reflecting the adjacent city streets trying to get across the traffic that's coming out the freeway?
The latter. All movements that go through an intersection are impacted, impacted level of service.
Okay. And so then on these charts for the 2020 build and the 2040 build, are they representing what's out in this aberration now, which is just stop signs? Or is it representing signals? And is it, or is it representing metered signals to represent how much space Caltrans needs on those off-ramps to handle exiting vehicles?
Are you asking about the Olive Mill interchange in this intersection?
Yeah, in particular.
This would be stop signs now, stop signs in the future. And that's what they're trying to, this analysis is trying to replicate or determine what a level of service experience would be for a member of the public during peak hour with a stop sign.
With a stop sign. And so if one of the design considerations, and this may be, I don't know which way this question goes, because now you're going to tell me I'm a year ahead. So if one of the design considerations leads to signals, and especially signal processes where you're metering your signal to avoid traffic backup on the freeway, which, you know, this becomes Creo, the Creo underchange, and I can't get across that intersection at 8:25 in the morning coming downtown, then how do these figures stand up in the future as being anywhere near accurate, not being much worse if you have to make those adjustments based on design considerations? Does that, does the question make sense?
Mr. Eads?
So from our perspective and from our analysis, we don't see a problem in terms of vehicles backing up onto the main line. And so I think that's what Rob was bringing up before, is there's, there's a general rule, Caltrans will protect the main line. There's a huge safety issue with vehicles backing on the main line, and so we don't want to exacerbate that condition. And so in this case, there's a very long off-ramp there. That's not a problem, and so it's not, the stop control, from our perspective, will continue to work into the future in terms of.
So would that be a safe assumption to make on anything that's been put in front of us? That a future design consideration wouldn't have to also then make a change in signalizing or not signalizing and lead to a consequence on a city cross-street in front of it? I mean, is all that part of your engineering out front, or does it happen later?
Well, we as a team, what we try to do is we try to estimate all those, they're called queues, behind.
Okay.
Behind an intersection onto the main line freeway. And then, and all those were set as about, you know, what, how far is that queue anticipated to go back? And is that okay or not okay? And I think they, we found some weren't okay. And then there were solutions presented because that can't happen. So in our, in the way we've planned for it now, that's not going to happen. However, just, just from our city experience, if in the future, for instance, for instance, and I think I mentioned this at Cabrillo interchange, you, you, the whole, when you look at a signal and, and all its legs, you're looking at the average delay, right? So everyone's delay may be different. Your delay coming into town on Cabrillo, on Cabrillo, may be F and the person getting off the freeway is maybe a C.
Or A.
Right? And then we, and then we, we average all of you together and we describe the whole. So it's very important that everyone's experience is a little bit different. So at this particular intersection at Cabrillo, in the future, the one that, the worst leg, the level of service that has the worst leg is the one getting off the freeway. And so that's, that's a red flag for us. Because we know that, that the rule is, and as it should be, we got to keep the main line, cars from backing up there. So if that's the worst level of service is that leg, we know that the Caltrans operations is going to be very protective to make sure it's always flushed. And that will probably give people going across the flow a worse level of service.
Okay. Okay, and then I have just a generic question on all the choices. I went, I went back and snooped through the, it had been the 101 in motion executive summary from several years ago and got past the accolades of the unanimous adoption by all the subcommittees and the unanimous adoption by SB CAG and blah, blah, blah. But the, the quote in there that was very, very near the front was that, pretty close to this, that the, the work on the Cabrillo Hot Springs interchange would be reconstructed to replace the left-hand on and off, off, off-ramps with standard right-hand ramps. And that was one of the, it's right up front in the report. It's one of the key consensus points. And yet, there's a bunch of choices here that don't reflect that at all. So is, is, would it, would it be safe to say that, that consensus is still a part of the eventual preferred choice going forward from SB CAG and Caltrans?
Mr. Hart?
I don't think we're understanding each other because there are, there are right-hand ramps in one form or another.
No, the, the word actually was, would be reconstructed to replace, which I get, so I read that as not being, I'm going to substitute Hermosillo for a right-hand off-ramp that's reconstructed or replacing the existing left-hand northbound off-ramp.
I think, so you're talking in the northbound direction?
And that, one in particular, yeah.
That's helpful. I think that's what came out of the community dialogue. When we first brought these proposals forward, we didn't have F modified and M modified.
Right.
And Hermosillo was the only off-ramp. So in, in response to the concern of the community, we added those two options as well.
Okay, and I guess, but I'm, I'm just kind of trying to narrow down at least my discussion on, on choices. And so would that, would it be safe to say that, that, that paragraph that's at the start of the SB CAG document is still the preferred scenario?
To have.
A replacement right-hand off-ramp?
Yeah, absolutely.
That is not Hermosillo, as, as that phrasing says.
Yes.
Okay, super. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Dayton, let's get back to Olive Mill. Would a roundabout solve most of the problems there?
Yes, we, we've done, we did a clever design for a roundabout and we have different ways of making it fit. And it does improve the level of service to A.
Okay. And I have a question for Mr. Eads. You said a few minutes ago, as it stands, it's not part of this project that is the roundabout or work on, on the Olive Mill intersection. What would it take to make it part of the project?
Well, it's, okay, from the, from, again, as a, from a project team perspective, we developed a purpose and need, and this is the purpose and need for the project in terms of what we were aiming to do and trying to achieve through the project was to fulfill the vision through 101 in motion and the regional transportation plan to provide main line congestion relief. So this goes back to the, the challenging issue of the reality that there is, there hasn't been a lot of improvements through, up and down this corridor for many years. And so there's, there's locations like this. This is one that exists within the city of Santa Barbara. There's also the railroad over crossing that we talked about over Cabrillo. Certainly, there's, there's interchanges within Montecito that there's desires for changes in the future. And so again, the project features that are proposed as part of this project and the proposal within the draft environmental document are those that are essential to the purpose of fulfilling main line congestion relief. Now, we still have a lot of process ahead of us. Once we've selected a preferred alternative and we move into the coastal development permit phase, traditionally, that's been a time when there's, there's more input in terms of other local projects that could move forward in parallel or, or something to that effect with, with the larger project. So as it stands right now, we don't see a purpose and need tie to that improvement. And we don't see that there's a, an exacerbating effect where we're causing a problem at that location, a significant problem. And so the, the project is not included at this time, but that's certainly a fair comment for the city to provide, is the concern and the desire to do something with that in the future.
I certainly would, would make that comment. I mean, if we could get to level of service A from F with this, then I certainly would like to see it as a comment on, on this and hope that it will be, it will somehow get in the program. Yes, Commissioner Larson and Commissioner Bartlet?
Thank you very much. I have a question and it's, it's a kind of a general question, but in going through the, the left side ramps slide, and then you made an interesting and intriguing comment, which was, we would have to go through the design exceptions process. What, what does that process entail for Caltrans? I know what it takes to, to come to a solution of an intrusion, of a setback in, in a homeowner sense. But for Caltrans, could you briefly describe what that process is, please?
Mr. Eads?
Okay, so the design exception process is, our, our first cut is to try to develop a project that meets all of our standards. And so as a general rule, Caltrans would desire that we don't even entertain design exceptions. And a design exceptions means basically a deviation from what our standards are, from what, what the expectations would be. It's basically a deviation from the building code, for instance, for a, a building project. So it's, and our, our standards are based on traditionally what has worked and what hasn't worked and what causes safety issues and what don't. And the fact that this is a high-speed facility, there's a lot of scrutiny in terms of safety if we deviate from our standards in any way. So in terms of an interchange, there's a lot of factors that would go into the design exception process. We consider operations, we consider safety, we consider accident histories, we consider potential for left-side ramps, we consider making sure that it's a full functioning interchange, that if somebody gets off that's not familiar with where they're at, they get off the interchange to use a restroom, there's a way to get back on the freeway and it's clear and intuitive. And when it's not, sometimes that can lead to folks going up an off-ramp and ending up on the main line in the wrong direction. So there's a lot of factors that will go into this analysis. And then it's basically a, a process where the engineer, as the lead on that effort, develops proposals, if you will, and they need to defend those proposals to headquarters' design reviewers. So it's working as a team to try to make sure that there's sound decisions. And liability is always an issue related to safety issues. And so there's always an exposure to liability if you deviate too far and it's not, an unfounded decision. And in the court of law, somebody has an accident later and somebody's hurt or killed, that leaves the designer and the department very vulnerable. And so any cost savings can quickly turn into losses if those are unsound decisions. And so it's a very thorough vetting process to make sure the decisions are sound and that we've reached conclusions that we can live with many years into the future.
Thank you. Commissioner Bartlet?
If Mr. Dayton could back up, well, he's already changed slides. Anyway, to the first slide that showed the 2020 build for the intersections that had the data, why, why is it with the same seconds of delay here, this is level of service C and the other twos are B?
Mr. Dayton?
Well, you know, it's, it's all based on our assumptions and where traffic was, traffic's going, based on the interchange configurations at Cabrillo. I don't know, Scott, can you explain?
Mr. Eads?
That's a really good question and perhaps it's a typo. Intuitively, I, I don't know. And so I, I would say, I would look at, I'll look back over that and see if that's a typo.
While you're at the podium, to follow up on Commissioner Larson's question about the design exception process, are there not currently design exceptions already on the books for the current left-hand off-ramps?
Yes.
If we're proposing to leave those, why do you need a new design exception?
Okay, good question. So part of this comes back to the context of the project and the fact that when that approval was, when, when the current project was approved, it was based on different accident history. And it was based on the assumption that this is a near-term project, it's a temporary fix, and that the long-term fix would need to address the entire interchange. And part of the conclusion of that process is that the, the on-ramp that was on the left hand side had to go because it, it had enough issues that it couldn't be retained. And so part of what drives us back into the approval process here is that we need to provide a, a third lane in the northbound direction. And so that starts changing the dynamics of the interchange, which as I mentioned, it starts, gets back to relation of the full functioning interchange, is potential for wrong-way movements, accident histories, operations. So, and it also has to do with the context of the project. If it's a much more expensive and larger project, the expectation is that you would go further in terms of making sure that it's a viable, long-term solution.
Okay, and then I have a question, and it was really prompted by looking at the slide of Los Potos, looking toward the elevated railroad bridge for options J, M, and M modified. Whoop, that back one, that one. Has public view blockage been analyzed, both from Los Potos? You can no longer see the mountains. If you go one prior slide, you can clearly see the mountains. And then the same thing when you're in portions of the Berg Refuge, looking toward the mountains with the elevated railroad bed. Now are we losing mountain views? And then similarly, from northbound 101 and from Old Coast Highway, are we losing views of the Berg Refuge and Ocean because of the elevated railroad bed?
So, so that is part of the visual impact assessment. So I, I believe if you look in the body of the draft environmental document or even go further and look in the technical report of the, of the visual impact assessment, it probably will reference those very factors. And again, that's why it's out for public review, is if there's concerns that we didn't recognize or issues that the public has that weren't necessarily part of our own conclusions, we integrate that and make sure we've considered that information.
You don't have any slides that you could put up of looking at it from the Old Coast side or northbound side or?
Pretty much this, I believe that these are all the slides that we viewed here are the ones that are shown in the document.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Excuse me, just real quickly, I wanted to add something that kind of answered Mr. Bartlet and Ms. Larson's questions about design exceptions. And, you know, we, for the past two years, we have been working with the Montecito Association's Transportation Subcommittee on, you know, kind of refining this proposal to make it as accessible as we could possibly can with the community. And literally, at the very first meeting of that, that body, the support for having the retention of left-hand ramps was expressed. And so Caltrans took that request and packaged it up in, in the form of a design exception, went through that process, trying to find a way that that could be approved, and it was not possible. And then as time went on and our conversations continued, there were other variations in designs that were discussed that would have approached that differently, that, that provided a different avenue for considering a design exception. And that also was packaged up and run through the process in Caltrans up to headquarters and found that that was not possible either. So, you know, wanted to be very, very clear that that design exception process isn't something that theoretically hasn't been used. It has actually been used on multiple occasions with this project for those specific reasons.
Mr. Hart, excuse me, it sounds as if you're saying that retaining the left off-ramps is not possible.
That's what I'm saying.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Does it also involve, since this is also a federal highway administration project, does it also run the risk of losing federal funds?
I don't think that's frankly the issue. The issue is that Caltrans standards at the state level are, are pretty prescriptive in this regard. And their process for deviating from them is this design exception process that we have availed ourselves on multiple occasions. And, you know, in, in defense of Caltrans designers, they took this very seriously, applied a lot of creativity to it. This was discussed extensively at the project design team level and, you know, with the community members, and, and we have not been successful in doing that.
And Madam Chair?
Yes.
My, my intent in asking the question was just to understand that process for our own elucidation, not necessarily to challenge anything, but just to understand the process that Caltrans has to go through and how their hierarchy works with respect to any, anything we might ask for, anything. So that's very helpful to me to understand.
And we really appreciate the opportunity to clarify this. I think this is a really important issue and we want to make sure that everybody understands.
And, and I needed to understand and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bartlet?
Mr. Hart, if you could clarify something for me. On schemes J, M, and M modified, obviously, there's a lot of dollars being put toward rebuilding the railroad bridge to elevate it to allow the new on and off ramps at Los Potos. And I think at our last meeting, it was, what, approaching $90 million or something to elevate two-thirds of a mile of railroad track and do a new bridge and everything else. In options F and F modified, can we not take a portion of that same money and actually rebuild the bridge that's the real problem? And that's the one, the railroad bridge at Cabrillo?
Yeah, I think what Mr. Eads alluded to is that, you know, when we scoped out this project and as it's been moving forward to this process, you know, we've approached this kind of with blinders on so that we can deliver the main line congestion relief. As we move through the planning process and we get into the, the permitting process as opposed to the environmental impact report. Because one thing you got to remember is every time we start studying something, it requires additional time, resources, and money to study these things. So the decision tactically was made early on, we're not going to study things that aren't critical for congestion relief. But understanding that as we move through the process and we get to the permitting process, those rules may not apply as strictly. But I, but I do have to caution you in the sense that I think you're on the right track to be thinking about, how do you do this with available resources? And, and the bottom line is, we don't have sufficient funding identified yet to do this entire project. We have a, a project that's in the neighborhood of $350 to $450 million approximately, depending on which alternative you choose. And we have $140 million for measure A that the voters, by 79%, you know, supported allocating toward this project. We have another $150 million that the SB CAG board has identified going forward for the next 10 years, where we take all of our state gas tax dollars and put it toward this project. But that's only, you know, 150 and 140. So ideas that involve additional things that would be desirable and nice to have are, are going to run into the tension of available funding.
But knowing that the EIR is out there under analysis, three of the five schemes include a new railroad bridge, elevating tracks, all of those efforts, the first two schemes don't have any of that included. It seems like it would be nice if you could at least include repairing the bridge that is most necessary, which is the railroad bridge at Cabrillo, so that it's included in the EIR, so that in the end, if that's the direction it goes, we don't have to recirculate the EIR and delay the whole process. It just seems it's been totally left out of, you know?
Well, but again, I think the reason why it's been left out is it is not necessary to provide a main line congestion relief. It's something that would be desirable, it's something that would be useful, it's something that SB CAG, you know, as the Regional Transportation Planning Agency would support. But again, it isn't critical. So the decision was made, we're not going to study things that aren't critical for the widening of the freeway.
If it's proven that it's less intensive than replacing and elevating the Los Potos bridge, could it fall under the umbrella of the EIR without having to then go out and be recirculated?
Probably not. We probably would need to do a supplemental EIR.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Schwartz?
Mr. Hart or Mr. Eads, my first of just a few questions, I think is for you. I'm trying to understand your evaluation methodology and what I might call, and I perhaps touched on this at our last meeting, you know, the philosophical or conceptual versus the realistic. And I asked about negotiations with Union Pacific. Because for those options that require cooperation from Union Pacific, and it seems to me, and Commissioner Bartlet just touched on it, at a heavy price tag, I'm, I'm not understanding how those are kind of reality-based options for us. for us to consider, when, wouldn't we have to bear the burden of that additional funding? The railroad's not offering to pick up the tab, and Mr. Hart just talked about the funding gap we already have in, I think, looking at the most, maybe even amenable of these options to the community. That's my first question.
Mr. Eads?
So, a fair point, and in terms of our project development process, as I said, we started with 19 configurations. We screened configurations that simply weren't viable for moving forward, or would have undue impacts. And ultimately, you end up with a narrower range of configurations, and you do additional design work, and ultimately, you come up with cost estimates. And so, in that process of refining the project that would be associated with those Los Potos configurations, it became more clear in terms of, we really worked with headquarter structures, and to the degree that we could, with Union Pacific, in regards to, are there narrower bridge structures that we could use, or something along those lines that would allow the vertical clearance to go down, and therefore, reduce the amount of profile adjustment that is needed on the railroad? So, there was a lot of discussions in those regards. Ultimately, we concluded that this is what's needed, and it's a four-foot profile adjustment, and so, there's a big cost, you know, big price tag associated with that.
Any recent discussions, like even in between our last meeting and today with Union Pacific, or has that been put on hold until get through a certain kind of next step with the city?
We would love to hear from Union Pacific. We're, they have a copy of the document as well, and we're happy to engage them. Traditionally, they're just quite a challenge ultimately to work with in terms of, their interests aren't aligned with us. We've seen that with the, what was going to be a tunnel behind the bridge abutment along Cabrillo, that ultimately, it didn't serve their interests, and so, they weren't interested in working with us anymore.
Yeah, that goes to the, really, the heart of my question.
Right.
Mr. Eads, one more question for you, if I might, and it has to do with noise impacts and noise abatement. I want to ask you about the sound wall being proposed, and I think it's, let's see, on page four of your slides, "Sound Wall Voting, Summer/Fall 2012." Could you clarify for me how many residences or homeowners we're talking about that would be voting in conjunction with, you know, opting in or opting out, so to speak, of having a sound wall in that area? Because I've heard different numbers of homeowners impacted.
Sure. So, I don't know the exact number of homes, but I can tell you the criteria that we'll use. So, the criteria is that the folks that will get to vote for or against that wall would be the homeowners that would either be benefited by the sound wall, and benefited means that they had received a five decimals of attenuation or more. And the secondary criteria is that those homeowners that wouldn't be benefited but might be affected. And affected means that they wouldn't receive the sound attenuation benefit, but it might have a viewshed implication for them. Maybe they're close to the end of the wall, and they have to look at the wall, but they don't receive an adequate amount of attenuation. So, it's that subset of homeowners. And so, as a general rule, it's those that are directly behind the wall for maybe the first row of homes, maybe two home, for maybe the second row of homes, and then the length of the wall. And we do a very thorough process in terms of analyzing which specific homeowners that are, and if there's certain criteria, when we get into the visual aspect, for instance, we'll come up with specific criteria and methodology for who gets to vote and who doesn't, if it is affected but not benefited.
Well, I was recalling that you had a simulation in the package somewhere about the extent of the wall, you know, kind of painting it in, so that you might know now kind of the breadth of it. So, I would think that you would know today which homeowners would be affected, and I guess no outreach has taken place, is that what you're saying at this point, it's premature?
So, we do know, we have a general sense of the number of homes that would be benefited. I just don't know right now.
Okay.
But certainly, our sound folks that have worked on this project, and within the EIR, there is, and within the EIR and the noise section, there's a designation that shows, delineates exactly where those sound walls are.
Yes.
And then, it actually does talk about the receptors and the amount of noise attenuation they would receive. So, we do know that information, I just don't know it offhand right now.
And so, then finally, on that one, so how will you go about this voting, sound wall voting? What does that process look like in reaching out to the community?
Okay, so the first thing that we are going to do is receive comments, and we know that there's, we haven't heard necessarily a lot within the city, but we know in other areas of the project, there's some folks that would like to receive sound walls that are not having sound walls proposed. In other locations, they might be receiving a sound wall, and they don't want it. And so, our process is that we are going to receive all the comments and process those, and if there's something that is awry within our analysis, then we want the opportunity to correct that, and if it ends up modifying the walls, if we end up adding a slight increase in the wall length or something to that effect, then that would drive that, who would vote? And so, our process will be that we first receive comments and assess those comments, make changes as needed, and then that would drive who would vote for the wall, kind of a precinct map, if you would. And then, we would send out ballots to all those homeowners and say, you have an opportunity to vote on the wall, a wall is proposed in front of your property, and you need to vote by such and such a date, and this is the way it'll be tabulated, and if over 50% of the folks that, I believe it's the folks that vote, don't want the sound wall, then we wouldn't build it. And that there'll be a meetings, a public meeting for those folks that have an opportunity to vote. We will hold a meeting and invite them to a meeting during that time when the voting is taking place, so that we can inform them of more details, you know, how high is the wall, I'm concerned about shadowing, we would answer those questions.
Great, thank you. My last question is, I think, for Mr. Dayton. So, I'm wondering if regarding the discussion around, how do we move forward with the Olive Mill-Cost Village Road intersection, which seems to me, I'm sorry, I have to keep going over this, we've got to address that, okay? So, I'll talk about that further in my comments. But, so my question is about the stopping site distance. Now, we have roundabouts elsewhere in the city that seem to me have very short stopping site distances. APS, coming in from, is it, you know, east Montecito down to APS? But I see, if I'm understanding this, you know, page two median planting slide, that one of the issues with Caltrans objections to moving forward with some reconfiguration or roundabout, unless I'm misunderstanding, is the stopping site distance. It says right here, is limited due to curvature. But we have significant stopping site distance issues elsewhere in the city with our roundabouts due to curvature.
It doesn't have anything to do with the roundabout. It has to do with the freeway itself, and then this picture is what we're talking about, actually.
Okay.
You see that curve there?
Yes.
If we were to provide a planted median here, you would not be able to see ahead sufficiently for, in the event of a high-speed stop, you know, you're going along the freeway at 65 miles an hour in this, in the southbound direction.
So, it's not the northbound exit?
No, it has nothing to do with the exit or the roundabout, it's the mainline itself.
Then, please do help me, why, why, going back to 2005, to where we are today, seven years, it seems to me that the increased congestion, clearly identified in numerous documents associated with the Coast Village-Olive Mill intersection, somehow seemed to have fallen off the table in terms of being studied and then being part of this plan. I'm sorry, I'm just not understanding why it's no longer in the discussion and in the evaluation.
Mr. Hart?
I think I'll try to answer that. It has to do, again, with the scope of this project. You know, we consciously chose to only focus on those things that are necessary to add the additional lanes on the freeway, not all of the attendant connected improvement projects that might be desirable. And frankly, this is one of those, but there are many others, the San Ysidro Interchange in Montecito, you know, other improvements in Summerland, improvements in Carpinteria. Unfortunately, if we were to have done that and studied all of those things that were desired by the local agencies, we would not be looking at a $450 million project, we'd be looking at a $700 million project.
Okay.
And that's the problem.
Okay, I hear you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, there are no more questions. Oh, I have a question, and this is about Los Potos. If Los Potos becomes a southbound on-ramp, how do the businesses on Los Potos have access? And how do customers come and go from that onto the, what's an off-ramp? Mr. Eads?
So, the expectation is that the Caltrans facility would end essentially where the, right there, where the little turnaround is now. And so, the circulation in terms of the local streets and access to those businesses would largely remain as it is.
There may be some slight trade-off in terms of driveways, which we'll have to make sure to work out, but the perspective is generally the access would be the same as it is. That's a recommended direction.
Part of the review process.
So, people would be having to contend with traffic, attempting to access the southbound off-ramp, and would have, okay, well, it sounds like it would be a tricky traffic situation if that were to happen. All right, let's go to comments from the public. Oh, here they are, thank you. If you spoke last time, I'd appreciate it, we'd all appreciate it very much, if you would simply summarize what you said before, and just let us know which of the alternatives you prefer. And maybe, you know, one or two sentences about why. So, the first speaker will be Tom Boleyn, he'll be followed by June Pujol. And I mean significantly less than two minutes, more like one minute, okay?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm speaking on my own behalf, I'm part of the Montecito Transportation Committee, so I have a lot of knowledge. We've been digging into this for a couple of years, but I thought a perspective of a former business owner on Coast Village Road might be helpful. My architectural office was located at 1170 Coast Village Road for the last, over the last 10 years, just recently have moved, and we suffered through all of the traffic congestion that occurred when we put the new roundabout in, and the lack of the southbound on-ramp at Hot Springs-Cabrillo. And just in going through some of these schemes, I think there's several things that have not necessarily become apparent in F and M with the new construction of the new, the new two interchanges that are going to the middle where the fastening off-ramps are now. For example, those would both need to close prior to the new ones opening for a period of probably two and a half to three and a half years. So, that means for that period, all of the traffic going to Coast Village Road is going to be on Los Potos, under a low overhead bridge, or on Hermosillo Road, with no necessary provision for how they handle that traffic during the period of construction. It's also over 250,000 cubic yards of grading to remove that, to remove those bridges and approach ramps, and then to rebuild the new ones.
Mr. Boleyn, I'm not sure that this is really part of what's before us now, and I know that, you know, whenever there's a project, plans have to be made for how to handle the traffic and all of that sort of thing, but that's not what we're looking at.
I'm trying to mention is that there's some options, like the ones that have the railroad bridge, that do not involve the grading and the closure of ramps during construction. So, there's some options on the table that have a lot less impact on the businesses on Coast Village Road, which is city property. So, even though there's talk about the additional costs of the railroad bridge, or of raising those tracks, there is an offset to lack of disruption to the local community, and that's where I was trying to go.
Okay.
It's a dollar versus disruption on these different options, although it seems like it's an obvious selection to go for the cheaper solution. It may not be cheaper in the long run due to the businesses that are on that road. The other last point I had is, there's a slide showing the off-ramp, I think it's on the F Modified, that the off-ramp comes down to Cabrillo Boulevard. If you look at your little handout that shows the elevated view, there's a discrepancy between the amount of landscaping you're going to see, there's actually going to be a full height retaining wall, the full length of that ramp, and in their landscape option, they're showing it as landscaping. I don't know if you can bring that up easily or not, the... I can back up a little bit. It's the view from the Old Coast Highway? From the existing new roundabout? That one right there, just below the yellow truck, or just in front of the yellow truck, if you look at the planned view, it shows the off-ramp immediately adjacent to the mainline, so that all of that area shown as potential landscaping is really going to be a vertical retaining wall that's 20 feet tall, just from an aesthetics point of view. I think it's important to point that out. Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boleyn. June Pujol will be next, and she will be followed by Martha Siegel.
Thank you, my name is June Pujol, I'm representing the Save Our Villages neighborhoods in the Hermosillo area, and we did submit a letter to you for the May 31 hearing, so hopefully you all have that. I do have a couple of extra copies if some of you need another one. Thank you for continuing this hearing today and taking a closer look at the options in the draft EIR. In our assessment, F Modified would have the least overall impacts and the least overall change for these neighborhoods. It would maintain the current traffic patterns, and it includes direct coastal access. It also avoids the Bird Refuge, all of those we think are key and important points to consider. In the letter that we did submit, we illustrated this in the form of a chart, and I don't know if you have it, but it's Attachment B, and what we did is just condensed the different impacts, major impacts of all the alternatives, and compared in contrast. And it shows a stark difference between F Modified and the other ones in terms of which ones have more impacts versus less impacts, and F Modified shows as being actually the one that has least overall impacts. We focused on the north end of the project area, and another Montecito group, the Montecito Association, took a broader view and looked in detail at some of the other portions, but we looked specifically at the Hermosillo side of things. And I just wanted to state that we are not, there's nothing that we are commenting on that's in direct conflict with some of the comments the Montecito Association has been making, and in fact, recently, their board approved a letter to Caltrans that maybe you have received, that includes a statement that they as well would not support any option that would leave Hermosillo as the only exit on the north end of the project site. We understand that there have been some requests for new alternatives to be studied that aren't currently in the document. We don't feel we have enough information today to intelligently comment on those, but would defer any comments we might have until after the feasibility of those additional alternatives was determined. But it would be particularly important to us to take a look at how any additional traffic circulating through the roundabout would affect Coast Village Road and the Hermosillo areas. Lastly, we'd like to reemphasize the importance of continuing participation of the design review team and regional coordination. We ask that your commission request that the design review team and this coordination be specifically included in the EIR as a critical mitigation measure. We've heard a lot of comment about the DRT, but I haven't actually seen it in the document as an aesthetic visual mitigation. So, basically, we ask that you consider these points and hope that you can discuss and perhaps give preference to focusing on F Modified as the best option to further refine in the document. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pujol. Martha Siegel will be followed by Diane Handlozer.
Thank you very much. I am...
State your name for the record, please.
Pardon?
State your name for the record, please.
Oh, okay, my name is Martha Siegel, I live at 180 Hermosillo Road in Santa Barbara. I live very close to Coast Village Road and to the coast, and to the intersection of Cabrillo and Coast Village Road. And I just want to, as an eyewitness, state my great agreement with the Montecito Journal, the Montecito Association, and the neighbors around me who make up Save Our Village, that making Hermosillo the primary northbound off-ramp is really a disastrous idea for the neighborhood and for the merchants on Coast Village Road. I happen to see all of the traffic that takes that I happen to see all of the traffic that takes that left turn off-ramp now and goes on to Cabrillo, and it's, there's a lot of it, and it's a lot, and it doesn't always get in the traffic counts because so much of it is weekend traffic, because it's a lot of tourists, and it's a lot of, the Airbus is going through there, I think five or six times a day, there are the delivery trucks that are going down to the hotels and things along the beach. And all of this suddenly getting dumped onto what's essentially a residential off-ramp doesn't make any kind of sense, because it's going to congest Coast Village Road, it's going to leave tourists wondering where in the world is Santa Barbara, how do I find the beach? And so I just want to speak for, at this point, of the five options that you have before you, of F-modified as being the better option, because it leaves the traffic patterns much as they are. It takes all of that southbound traffic right directly onto Cabrillo, it keeps it out of Coast Village Road and away from the roundabout, and it's just going to work better for everybody. And even though it may, there may be a little more vegetation that's taken out, vegetation can be replaced, but degraded neighborhoods and degraded streets and a degraded business district really can never be replaced. So, thank you very much for your very thoughtful consideration of this.
Thank you, Ms. Siegel. Diane Handlozer will be followed by Sybil Rosen.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, my name is Diane Handlozer, I live at 148 Hermosillo. I will sing the same song briefly. I feel that F-modified, of the five plans, F-modified has the least effect on Coast Village Road and the neighborhoods that come up against Coast Village Road. I'm on Coast Village Road many times a day, on foot and in my car, and I see firsthand what congestion does. It's not good for the businesses, it's not good for your revenues as a city, and it's not good for our neighborhoods. I think any, everybody who lives in Montecito is going to have to deal with the changes that, you know, our, your decision and the joint decision of all the powers that be comes to, and we're going to live with this for 40 or 50 years. And every time we want to go to Bonds, every time we want to go into Santa Barbara, we're going to have to deal with this traffic that is put onto Coast Village Road if, if any option beside F-modified is chosen. I'm also very concerned about any of this traffic from the freeway getting into the roundabout. It seems silly to me that we have to, would have to, as a community, deal with beachbound traffic when there are, when F-modified takes the traffic directly onto Cabrillo and avoids the roundabout. So I urge you to, I know that you're taking this very, very seriously, and that you love this area and, you know, want to come to the best decision, so I urge you to, to take a close look at this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sybil Rosen will be followed by Bob Short.
I've always wanted to follow Bob Short, but it would be the other way around. I'm Sybil Rosen, and I want to just mostly say ditto. We have been looking at this for a very long time, and I can hear the concern of many of you for the Olive Mill situation, and certainly that is an extension of our concern as well. Right now, our real focus has been on the Cabrillo interchange, and I would just ask you to please visualize the long-term effect of the decisions that are made here, to consider the cost only and the loss of vegetation only, leaves out the most important element, which is maintaining the village with the least impact to the traffic flow. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for being so concise. Mr. Short has two people here who--
Which is the light?
--are yielding time to him. Jean von Witterling?
Whittenberg.
Whittenberg. Thank you. And Thomas Kern. Okay. All right. Mr. Short?
Chair Lodge, Commissioners, I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you again. I will say right off that I appreciate Ms. Pujo's comment. We do totally support the Hermosillo neighborhood. It's important to keep that major traffic away from there. Let's see, whoop. This, this one? The DED does not adequately inform decision-makers as required by CEQA. There's three major impacts that are not understood or not significantly mitigated in the DED. Visual resource impacts, construction environmental impacts, and traffic and community issues during construction. The DED is deficient because it does not enable comparative evaluation of alternatives. There's no overall simulation of visual impacts. We saw a whole series of pictures of the roadway today, but no overview of what you see when you're driving along, no visual simulations at the ground level showing the mass and grading required for retaining walls, or the size, bulk, and scale of the bridges. That's just not been made available to you. And there's no information on construction during the phasing. There are no details regarding construction disruption and the scheduling to allow for a comparison of impacts. The DED fails to study the present potential viability, viable alternatives, that lessen significantly the visual impact. Now, these are two of their own schemes from the EIR, with one exception, the little arrows tell you that those trees can't exist through construction. There's a huge difference in the visual impact, but from the draft EIR, you would never know that. Same thing for construction impact. It's shown in red. This again is F-modified and J. Tremendous amount of construction there, it's so obvious, and so little on J. But shouldn't they have told you that was that kind of difference to help you in your evaluation? Now, since we last talked, we've retained a highway engineer, and a highway estimator, and a traffic consultant to try to better understand and dig through the volume, volumes of data that are hidden in the appendages. So I want to talk seriously, we want to compare F-modified and what we call J-modified. F-modified here removes, removes both off-ramps. Where did it? Okay, thank you. It removes both off-ramps. Then it builds two bridges on all lanes to them, including a new northbound lane in the center. Ah, get out of there. Then they demolish the existing bridges and the lanes. Then they construct a new southbound ramps, and construct new northbound off-ramp. Finally, the revisions to the northbound on-ramp. Now, we should talk briefly about traffic issues during construction. We're looking at a three, three and a half year period. We found something in the documents that indicated they were something four years, but I think that's too long. The first thing they're going to do is take down, take out the two ramps. It can't be built any other way. So that means from day one, our Hermosillo neighborhood and Coast Village Road are going to get all the northbound traffic. All the southbound will go to Hermosillo, or to Los Potos. So imagine three and a half years directing all that traffic that they don't like onto their nice little neighborhood. Now, let's take a look at what J-modified, some people won't like that name, but we had to call it something. There's no demolition at all. It retains the existing left-hand, southbound off-ramp. Now, I wanted to, ah, get out of there. I'm out of control. Let me go back. I don't know how to make it go back. So, Rob's my boy. Right there, right there. Greg Hart was really quite eloquent in talking about left-hand off-ramps. He did a very thorough job. There's just one mistake. It's not precluded, definitely. I can assure you that it can be further considered, and should be further considered. Another thing we found out just recently, for months, Caltrans told us, all this trouble about the safety problems, we can't, we can't have that for safety, we can't have it for safety. And you know what we find out in their own documents? That every southbound off-ramp in the city of Santa Barbara that's a half diamond, just like this, has an equal or worse accident record than the existing southbound left-hand off-ramp. Now, to not take that into consideration and want to totally tear the whole community apart, seems like a shame to me. The, the northbound off-ramp would be constructed first. Now, you see there, we have a, what we have is a very much larger roundabout, which would be, would start exactly at the south end where the existing one is. It would be probably larger than Vila Pus and two-lane all the way around. The, it will handle more than twice the traffic that this will handle. And your existing ramp, by the way, in less than 20 years after this project, will be a LOSF. So this gets built first. The southbound off-ramp, on-ramp at Los Potos would go next. Now, we're proposing that this be, that we just leave the existing bridge away, right where it is. By the time this project is built, there will have been no southbound off-ramp for about eight years. And it's also not a truck route. So the railroad would permit putting a sacrificial beam in front of it and leave it exactly as it is, so that small trucks and cars have a perfect access to it on the southbound. The northbound lane would be constructed along with widening the bridge, and the traffic issues here are totally limited to a month or two during the construction of the roundabout, because more than half of it can be built without touching the existing roads. Now, I wonder if we could direct comparison between J-modified and F-modified. As a visual resource mitigation, J-modified is far superior, as you can tell by looking at this chart. Total difference in the visual impact. Construction scope, it's far less. Again, no comparison between the amount of construction in the one and the amount in the other. The savings could be, we say $20 million, I think they'll be much more than that. And I know that's not a, it's not a DER item, but it's a fact. Construction duration would probably be 18 months less. And the amount of work, we went through their estimating documents, and it appears that there's about 250,000 more cubic yards of grading for modified F. We believe there's 3,500 linear feet more of retaining walls for modified F. On modified F, they would demolish, as best we can compute, about 180,000 square feet of roadway and rebuild it. That's over four acres. And the accident record, as I mentioned before, would project to be equal or better. If, if they can't build half-diamond ramps in Santa Barbara that are any safer than what they can build here, then I don't think there's anything to be gained by it.
Mr. Short, you're over your time, if you could wrap it up.
Please, please give me a little forbearance, if you will. If I smile, can I have a little?
Okay.
We do have to purchase them right away. And again, your existing roundabout's going to be LOSF in 2040 by your own conclusions. Our conclusions, the J-modified will preserve visual resources. It will reduce construction time and its environmental impacts. It will reduce construction traffic disruption, and it will reduce the cost while maintaining safety. Now, again, I realize the cost isn't a factor, but you know the money that's saved there in this tight project could build you a new Cabrillo Railroad and correct the efficiency at Olive Mill, and that could be a great trade-off. We recommend that you find the draft EIR incomplete and deficient, that it must be corrected and recirculated, and it should require that J-modified be included and thoroughly analyzed in the draft EIR. It may not be the final solution, but it deserves to be fully analyzed in that EIR. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Short. I have another request to speak from Jack Overall. Mr. Overall? And Mr. Overall will be the last speaker.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is Jack Overall, for the record. I am a member of the Montecito Planning Commission, and as you may know, on the 6th of this month, a joint of Montecito Planning Commission, County Planning Commission reviewed the same project, different aspects of it. We had a lot of, a lot of comments and concerns, I'm sure that will be similar to those that you have, the aesthetic being a big one. One of the comments that we did not make, because I think at the time, the full implication, it certainly hadn't impacted me, and I suspect it had not impacted other Commissioners, was that if you take the scope, not of just the city portion of the project, but all through the Montecito corridor, and what Mr. Short just went through about the total demolition of the Cabrillo Hot Springs, both sides, north and southbound, that same feature is repeated down at Sheffield. And if you take those two interchanges and you project a three to four-year timeframe, we didn't consider the impact to the community, the financial impact on the community, the business community. And I know in the document, there is a comment about changing the character of the community, and they use the term a little differently than I would, I was thinking in terms of the visual character. But I do think that that prolonged period of construction has the potential to have a vast impact on the community, Santa Barbara and Montecito. Because you can imagine people trying to come up from Los Angeles for a nice weekend, and they're going to hit that, I mean, it's, it's bad already upon occasion, they're going to hit that traffic, and they're going to hit it over and over and over again, and I think over a three or four-year period, is going to have a devastating cumulative impact on the desire to people to come to Santa Barbara, Santa Barbara as visitors. So I would just say that that's something that we failed to consider, at least I as a Commissioner failed to consider, and I think it's kind of an important aspect that ought to be taken into account. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Overall. Okay, that concludes the public speakers, so it's back to the Planning Commission. Commissioner Jordan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think just a couple for Caltrans, and the visual resource impacts, aren't we already saying, and aren't you already asserting in the EIR that those are significant and They're not, they're not read the way I like my charts and my little EIR is reading, but that's the take from that, isn't it? That they're Class 1 impacts and they can't be mitigated, right? And then, left-hand off-ramp, yes or no?
Yes or no what?
Well, I, I heard no, absolutely over here, then I hear yes over here. Does it really just come down to what, what this area is, what this district's willing to carry up to the state to ask for in terms of retaining a left-hand off-ramp?
It's, it's much bigger than this district. And Headquarters folks have been engaged all along, that, I can tell you, for this project more than any other project I can think of, at least ones that I've been exposed to within this district, the designer for this project really worked hard to try to entertain possibilities that would retain left-hand ramps and other creative ideas. She, she really took it upon herself to engage design forces in the central region at Headquarters that were involved in the approval process, to try to process design exceptions that could be approved, and to try to entertain and get approval for ideas that were more creative than we would normally see. And ultimately, through that process, we kept coming back to the same conclusion that I mentioned before, that it's just not a viable long-term solution that Caltrans can approve.
Okay, and then is the, the construction process for, say, F-modified, the way it was described by the Montecito Association-- by the Montecito Association, where you would essentially close the existing left-hand northbound off-ramp for a period of years and just leave Hermosillo as the option until the new northbound off-ramp was built? Is that an accurate description?
So, in terms of what we just witnessed in terms of the Milpiss-Hot Springs project, we saw a construction schedule that was largely dictated by work over Sycamore Creek, where we have narrow construction windows, where we can only be working in the creek area a few months of the year. And so that largely dictated the construction scheme that we saw. For something like F-modified, essentially, the expectation would be that once the Cabrillo, there might have some overnight closures or something like that, putting up false work to construct the new structures. But once those are up, the structure work can occur within that area in pretty fast pace. And so we're not looking at a three- to four-year construction window. It'd be much less than that. And yes, there would be some ramp closures. And the document talks about what we do in terms of traffic management plan and making sure that we plan for that well, and that we recognize there's some temporary impacts to the community in terms of constructing a project like this. But we would work very closely with the city in terms of making sure that we come up with a strategy that's going to work well, and we handle the closures. And there's incentives that we can provide, contractor incentives and other things, to really ensure that those durations are reduced to the best degree we can.
So is it too early to say what that time period would be?
I don't know off the top of my head. There's a lot of, a lot of that would be detailed out further in the design process. Really, we're looking at the differences between the features so we can select the best alternative. And we feel like all of these are viable in terms of, they all can be constructed, and we can temper the impacts associated with that.
So, I think, you know, that point that was brought up about economic impact, in that particular case, I might have talked about this a couple of weeks ago when it's related to a physical, I think I did, or else I wouldn't have it written down there, that, you know, the potential economic impact based on a physical change that then can be addressed in the EIR as an impact, that would just be a comment to make sure that you are acknowledging that you have an undetermined amount of ramp closure at this point in time, but now you're going to have to go figure out what that is, how much that time, it would only be Hermosillo, gauge whether that would lead to an economic tourism impact, and whether that would be significant or not, and address that? I mean, that would be a comment that would be made, then?
Any comments that the Commissioner of the city wants to make, certainly. We want to hear concerns, and that'll be part of the preferred alternative selection process. The city staff is involved in that.
It's kind of like one of those chicken and egg things, though, because you don't know the answer to the time period. But if you knew the answer to the time period, then you could make a better comment based on whether you thought that should be an addressed impact or not, right?
I understand your concern, and that's a fair comment to make. The construction should be part of the preferred alternative selection process, and make sure that we have adequate measures to support that.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Commissioner.
And the other thing, just that I will mention, is that, again, for Cabrillo Boulevard, once the false work goes up, work on that structures and those structures could take place, and Cabrillo would remain open all that time. And in terms of the main line, much like we saw with the Milpiss-Hot Springs project, we're committed to retaining two lanes open on the main line in the daylight hours into the evening to make sure that we don't have backup. So essentially, the amount of capacity and the lanes that are available right now would continue to be available on the Main Line 101 throughout the duration of construction. And the other point to think about is, and I think it was said by Chair Cooney at the County Planning Commission, is that, you know, this project is largely for our kids and our grandkids, and that we have to think ahead here, and that the reality is there is some construction impact with a project like this. We're talking about a lot of work. We're trying to achieve something big here. But ultimately, we want to make sure we select the best improvement that's going to work for the future.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm just going to make sort of an overarching, general statement right now, and I'm going to be eager to hear from my colleagues. For me, there's a basic disconnect. And maybe this is just what we have to live with as Caltrans, as the lead agency on this. And that is, and I'm going to, I wrote down, I think Mr. Eads said this, that the project objective is relieving mainline congestion. But this main line goes through a community. And we are the community, and it needs to be about community, not just those who are traveling from some point south to some point north or vice versa. And I think I brought this up in our last meeting. And when I went back to CEQA and the National Environmental Policy Act, it seems to me that we're not fulfilling our legal duties, and I'm not going to ask our Assistant City Attorney necessarily to comment on this, but I'm looking at the language from NEPA. I downloaded this. And we have an obligation to fulfill social, economic, and other requirements of present and future generations of Americans in looking at not only design, not only its needs, but impacts, and not just for the main line, but for community. And I feel overall that we have not done a sufficient job with this environmental impact report in comprehensively evaluating the impacts that are our legal responsibilities, quite frankly. So I'm not sure how to reconcile what is a state project that flows through the middle of Santa Barbara, and that I think will have vast impacts, adverse impacts on our community for quite some time to come, if there is any relief to come in years ahead, possibly beyond my lifetime. And I'll just close for now by saying these Class 1 impacts that are unmitigable, that have been identified, right now, I wouldn't feel comfortable making a finding of overriding consideration to support that. So, I appreciate Mr. Eads and Mr. Hart, all the work and the outreach to the community, I truly do. But I'm just, I'm not feeling like I'm at a place where I can support where we are with the assessment of impacts to this community. And to me, that's a priority. So, again, I'm going to be eager to hear from my colleagues.
Madam Chair? Yes, Mr. Vincent?
I do want to make a couple of comments, just so that the public isn't confused or misinformed. One is, an environmental impact report is a CEQA document. It's not a NEPA document. And there is such a thing as a joint EIR/IS that would satisfy both statutory requirements. The fact that there isn't an EIS tells me that we're not dealing with a NEPA issue, or was it concluded that there are no impacts under NEPA?
Mr. Eads?
So it's an EIR/EA, so it is a CEQA and a NEPA document.
Okay. I hadn't seen it described that way.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's the case.
The other point to make is that Caltrans is the lead agency. They will be the ones to make any overriding considerations. And so, we, the point of these hearings were for the, now, you will have to make your, you'll have to use their EIR/IS when you consider your coastal development permit. So that will happen. But they will certify the EIR/IS. The, let's see, the point, you know, the purpose of this hearing and what is going on now is for the Planning Commission and the community and the public to help inform comments that will come from staff on behalf of the city to this document, informing Caltrans' process and informing Caltrans' decisions regarding the preparation of the document and the certification of the document. So that's, I just wanted to kind of clarify our roles in the process at this point, and so that people understand how the public and how the Planning Commission and how the city staff can influence the project at the stage it is now, and understand the context in which it will be moving forward in the future.
Mr. Vincent, along with Caltrans also, that will be deciding on the adequacy of the EIR, whether it needs to be recirculated again as well. Is that correct?
Yes. As the lead agency, they make those determinations on whether or not recirculation must occur and otherwise. There are those, as the lead agency, their decisions may be questioned and challenged by the public and other responsible agencies as well. So, they have to be cognizant, or they should be cognizant. I guess CEQA requires them to be cognizant, at least hear our comments, respond to those comments. And if they choose to respond, depending on how they respond to the comments, they may open themselves up for challenge if they do not proceed as required by law, in other words, as required by CEQA. So, they, as the lead agency, they sit in the same position as when the city is the lead agency and preparing an environmental document. We have to be cognizant when comments come out. We have to take them seriously. We have to respond to them in the final document. And if we do not respond adequately, that can be subject to challenge. Same for Caltrans when they are the lead agency preparing the environmental document.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else ready to comment? Mr. Jordan, Commissioner Jordan.
You're really so shy. So I'll just toss in the comments and then get out of the way. So, the only additional, and I wrote something down on this economic impact I was just talking about, but I'm not sure I made the comment two weeks ago for the EIR. So, I would definitely like to see addressed a conversation on a projected northbound Cabrillo Boulevard lane closure time, where the traffic is going to be routed to Hermosillo, and what type of impact that would have from an economic standpoint in the EIR. And I draw that distinction, because I'd probably just go back and look in my little EIR manual, but, you know, my quote is that "if a social or economic change is related to a physical change, then the social or economic change may be considered in determining whether the physical change is significant." And I would pose to you that the existing Cabrillo off-ramp is, for many of our tourism guests, the entrance to Santa Barbara. They get up there, they like the drive down, meandering past the cemetery and the Bird Refuge and the view coming into Santa Barbara. And if indeed you got to a point where that was going to be, that access was going to be closed, and somebody was going to have to go Hermosillo for a period of time, I think that would be an impact. I really equate that to, I hear a ton from waterfront people when the underpass is being worked on at Castillo, or when it was being worked on with the little electric battery soak-the-water-up thing. And there are some active waterfront people down there who can show you numbers that when that street is closed, or when Fiesta comes to town and there's access restricted, that their economic figures plummet, because people just drive by and go somewhere else. And then my other comments would just have to do with, not with the EIR, but just feedback on the plan in general. And I think, personally, I think you're in the right direction with F-modified. I would personally agree that you need to continue to honor the work you did on the Highway 101 in motion process, and that you need to have replacement ramps for the left-hand ramps. That knocks out several of the others. I think JM and MMod are a horrible thing to put on Las Potos for either direction, off-ramp or on-ramp. And I think you probably maybe not even addressed what the backup would be on Cabrillo, trying to turn left against opposing traffic to get onto a northbound off-ramp on Las Potos. Right there, I think there's about a left-hand turn now of one lane, or one car length, one or two car lengths. And I don't know how you'd find more room for a queue going there. I agree with your 2013 schedule. Hope to be here for that when you come back for a coastal development permit. And I would encourage you that without a prior concept review process that involves the stakeholders, such as the city, that would be less than beneficial to all involved. And I would continue to support, in general, the choices in the mainline widening that gives you the flexibility to choose inside or outside, rather than put it all one way or all the other way, and just let you have that flexibility to apply that as you best feel it will benefit all involved. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Larson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. In looking at and considering options and design considerations, that sort of thing, as well as the EIR, I do want to support what my colleagues have said about their EIR comments. I tend towards F-modified, because I am very concerned about impacts to the Bird Refuge and to the Las Potos businesses. I think that, I think one of the most telling slides is to see a chain-link fence, or any decorative fence, in front of Stellamare and continuing on down through there. I just, that would take that completely away as a business community, to use it as a complete off-ramp. I feel very strongly about this feeling. I made a few notes about it. It's a design challenge, really, to preserve as we enter Santa Barbara. When I exit that left exit on Cabrillo, when I can't take it anymore on the freeway, I'm home. It's just a deep breath. There's the Bird Refuge. There's the ocean again. And by golly, I'm not having to proceed further on the freeway, which is a chore. So, I'm home. I just swing around by the beach. I blow kisses at every seagull and pelican. And it's everything that's home to me, and to everybody, I think, who arrives. My kids who come north get off there, because they don't like the smell of the garbage that's coming from the recycle station. So they get off at the Bird Refuge and go around that way. Good thing we fixed that smell. So, you know, I just want Caltrans to appreciate how important these design elements are to us. And probably I'm more sweating two things. Effects on business, and, you know, remember Coast Village Road, we have a plan coming into effect, and it's going to support mixed use in certain areas. That's already residential. It already has part residential. There's some apartments there, and there's people just behind. We have had to study Coast Village Road. We understand, I don't ever call it rural, but a more village character. And that means residential is right there, a budding commercial, walkability and things like that. I don't want to take anything like that away from anywhere in that area. It's very important to the character. And that's part of Santa Barbara. So, I appreciate and honor that for the village. But the design challenge, you know, when we come around, we've got massive retaining at the Garden Street off-ramps, but we also have massive landscape. And that's what softens that whole thing up. So, that generosity of landscape, that ficus repens and that, you know, the vining and the abundant plantings that are maintained makes such a difference for us. So, I'm going to reiterate that design challenge is to merge great design with great engineering. And that's going to be the crux, I think, that's going to make it or break it. But the thing is, is that we can't roll dice in Santa Barbara and just make it and make it or break it. Because what we do here will far exceed our own lifetimes of anybody on this board, or you guys, or anybody. You're talking about bridges that will be structurally okay for 50 years. Well, I won't be driving over those bridges. Maybe little bits of my ash will now and then. But, you know, we have to take this responsibility very seriously. I'm seeing landscaping that was planned when I first came to Santa Barbara over 40 years ago mature now. And it's amazing to me how some of these things strike paydirt and happen. But it takes 20 years for it to occur. So, recreating a gateway that's worthy coming off of Cabrillo, at Cabrillo, is going to be the challenge. And it has to be that scale and that lack of mass that makes it work. You can't take that monumental amount of concrete and say, ah, you're home. That is not home here. So, that's going to be part of the challenge. I'm going to reiterate too about the decorative K-rail. I know that sounds like such a silly thing, but we see miles of K-rail, and now we're seeing it up the central coast, where we used to have medians, and it's replacing. But the least we could do is make it decorative. I mean, that's a serious thing to me. So, in terms of keeping our small-town feel, our scale, and our livability, that attention to that kind of detail and the design is, you know, to me, it's almost, it's throwing several things off- several things off the table, keeping some on, and then making whatever we choose of those, and I'm more inclined for F-modified than any other one at this time, having the information I do at this time, but making it the best it can be. Not adequate, but really good or great. Not adequate. Adequate we can get. Anybody can, I tell my kids that. You can be adequate, but I want you to be great. And I'll tell Caltrans the same thing. You know, I'm looking for your greatness, not your adequacy. So, bring that to the table and maybe we can put up with three years of agitation. We certainly, living on the 101 character, put up with years of agitation anyway. There's always construction somewhere. Used to be Johnson Road. So, anyway, those are my comments. It can be done, but it's got to be done really in an exceptionally fine way. And that's why I think the design, the design community should be very involved in it. I'm sure Mr. Bartlett, whose mind can't be shut off on design, and mine, which if you put me in a nice interior, works like mad too, but not so hot on freeway off-ramps, but I give it a go. It's, you know, it's not something you can automatically turn off and it's not something we get to do over. So, there's a, thank you for listening and thank you for nodding because with our action minutes, it doesn't mean it might get in there, but I have a phone and I know where Greg Hart lives. Thanks.
Commissioner Bartlett.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I always enjoy following Stella, she gets me going. But first of all, before I make my comments, I really want to commend the community members that have really put so much effort into this. And it's enjoyable to see the concepts and the ideas that you bring forward. And unfortunately, I think we're a little bit late getting on this bandwagon without slowing the whole thing down, dumping a lot of more money into it to back up. And I would hope that we could carry forward sort of that community spirit and enthusiasm and maybe we can focus all the roundabout redesign ideas on the other end of Coast Village Road and end up with, you know, roundabouts at both ends and make it better for the community. So, if we can't get what we need here, please take that effort and harness it on the other end and, you know, let's solve that part. So, please keep up the effort there. In terms of the alternatives that have been analyzed so far and that are, you know, moving forward for continued analysis, in my mind's eye, alternate F really impacts the Montecito community with one northbound off-ramp. I mean, it's just devastating for them and I don't favor that alternate. And I hope that the impacts that have been elaborated on by my colleagues, especially the social and financial aspects during construction, really need to be hit home, I think, in the EIR analysis. And then on the other end of the spectrum, I think alternates JM and M-modify devastate the Los Potos area and the bird refuge. Same thing, I think we really need to understand, you know, the physical impacts and the economic impacts and the fact that the birds will no longer have refuge. I mean, that's going to become a heavily-used area. So, I think, and especially with those last three, I think what needs to be bolstered and really reinforced in the EIR analysis is the impact that the temporary shoe-fly railroad realignment is going to have on that whole skyline treescape between Los Potos and the railroad. I mean, all that's going to come down to move the railroad, to allow the bridge to be raised, and it's not going to look the same. So, I think the visual impacts, especially on JM and M-modified, really need to be hit home. I think we need better views. I think we need to understand the effects of the elevated railroad, the loss of all the landscape, not only from the bird refuge side, but from the Montecito side of the freeway and Old Coast Highway. So, I would look for, you know, better documentation and visual analysis on those because I think you're going to find it's pretty devastating. So, that leads me to F-modified, which I think in terms of the solution is the closest to kind of giving us what we need. Granted, it's going to be a lot of construction. We are going to need to rely on good design and I hope that this moves fast enough that I can still be on the DRT for the next two and a half years and participate in that. I'm convinced that, you know, Caltrans does listen and would be willing to work with us to come up with the best design that we can get, you know, for this scenario. And I'd like to see it move forward. I think it, you know, it has its own challenges, but I think with the right effort, we can deal with it. I'm sad to see a lot of the work that we started with the 101 in motion having to get kind of unraveled now to implement it. Here, we just widened the southbound bridge, now the bridge has to go away. But anyway, that's happened. We need to figure out how can we do this in the least impactful way, both in terms of, you know, the construction implementation and the impact on the surrounding community. It can't be a win-lose. It's got to work for both sides. So, I think that's the real juggling act and balancing that we need to maintain so that it works for the community and for Caltrans. It can't be one or the other. So, again, I think the visual impacts are the hardest to overcome, but I think with real work, let's put our efforts into good design and good landscape and try and get there that way. I think the others are just too devastating to even consider. So, I would support the F-modified direction. Thank you.
Commissioner Thompson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I'd like to thank Scott and Greg and everybody who come back today. And the community members have put forth a lot of effort to bring some good points to us here. I'd like to observe before I start my comments that there are many, many topics that are covered in an EIR, but you'll notice that the only thing that we've been talking about here today, a little bit of aesthetics and a lot about traffic, and most of the traffic doesn't have anything to do with the traffic on the mainline. Everybody's talking about the impact of the traffic on businesses and intersections off the mainline. And I think that's important to recognize in the context of the EIR. I'll talk a little bit about aesthetics first. I agree with Commissioner Larson about doing the best we can on whatever we do. And I agree with her and my other commissioners, Commissioner Schwartz, idea about having a design review team. And I would urge that we do that, not only with members of this board along with Caltrans and SB CAG, but members of the community so that as we go forward, we get the best information from all sources as to how to make this, put some lipstick on this pig so that we can make it the best, the best that we can do out of it. Traffic is the big issue here, obviously, and as I mentioned, it seems to me that most of the focus in the EIR is all on what impacts are on the mainline and the off-ramps and on-ramps. And if you go to the SEQA checklist in the appendix A and you look under the traffic section, you would get the idea that transportation and traffic has no impact. It's either no impact or less than significant impact. But if you factor in the impacts on local traffic, virtually every one of those questions would be answered with impact with mitigation or impact that's potentially significant. And I think there was a study done with SB CAG that looked at some of these traffic issues here that's not included as part of the EIR. And I think maybe it could be included as an appendix to the EIR. And I think we ought to look more closely at some of these impacts as we get away from the off-ramp and away from the on-ramp. As I mentioned earlier, we had some assumptions about how the traffic would result from the latest round of improvements. And the people aren't following the model, which is causing a lot of the congestion on Coast Village Road and Cabrillo Boulevard that people have been complaining about. So, we need to look at the current traffic as it exists and make sure that our modeling does the best that we can and use all of the information that we have, including this study that is not part of the EIR. With all due respect to the Montecito Association, I couldn't support a solution that dumps any traffic coming off the freeway right into that roundabout. If you think about it, local traffic that needs to go to Coast Village Road is going to exit at Olive Mill. And if they're really local and know the routes, they're going to probably go on down to Hermosillo and they know the shortcuts up to where they're going. But the people that are coming to go to the beach area, you dump them off into a roundabout, I think I can see all kinds of potential problems with levels of service approaching F right away. So, I don't think any solution that doesn't minimize the route to the beach area is a good solution. And the only solution that I see of the ones that we're discussing here right now is the F-modified. The same can be said about the issues using Los Potos and any of those options there. I don't think any solution that puts more traffic on Los Potos, either going to or from 101, is taking into consideration the intersection of Los Potos and Cabrillo Boulevard and what that's going to happen, what's going to happen there. So, again, I say the only solution that you proposed here that doesn't impact that Cabrillo-Los Potos or dumps more traffic into the roundabout is the mod F. One final general observation, and that is, I think that in the EIR, we need to have a clearer and more up-to-date reference to city policies and regulations to support findings we're going to have to have when we make a local coastal approval. I cite as an example of references to the city's general plan are out of date. So, that needs to be brought up to date. And there are other areas in the SEQA checklist that I think reflect some of the issues that are, that I mentioned, that are different between local issues and Highway 101 issues. I suggest, just one here is under noise, exposure persons or generation of noise levels and excess of standards established in the local general plan. It's talked about that it's less than significant with mitigation, but you're using a 67 dB threshold, whereas the local general plan talks about a 65 dB threshold. So, all of those issues, I think, need to be reviewed so that we can be using the same rules when we have to make our local coastal plan determination. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Anyone else? Commissioner Schwartz, did you want to make any further comments?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think that I would just be in alignment with a number of my colleagues' statements about best-case scenario of the five options would likely be F-modified for all the reasons that have been stated. I think it will be absolutely devastating to Coast Village Road to either close Hermosillo or dump the northbound traffic into a roundabout that, for some who are not familiar with navigating roundabouts, is already confusing for those of us who have witnessed what goes on in our roundabouts and certainly for travelers who are just visiting, may have either not come to Santa Barbara before or have not navigated roundabouts. I think it could really be a danger to boot. And we just cannot afford on Coast Village Road specifically, and I've talked to some of the merchants there, any adverse economic impact, let alone the, those that are by Los Potos and further down along the beach. I think we have to be very sensitive in the engineering, the design and impacts over what period of time in terms of what's absorbable by our community. And yes, there are trade-offs. I'm hoping that Caltrans will continue to be as engaged as they have been. So, again, I thank you for that. And as respectful as you have been, I thank you for that. In the end, I still see somewhat of a disconnect between just the nature of your objective of this project versus what I would characterize as our community's objectives. And so, we just probably have to live with that tension and find a way to reconcile them as we work together. And I'll look forward to that. But for this, at this point, I'm going to support some of my colleagues' leanings towards an F-modified, knowing that, as Commissioner Bartlett said, and that he and Commissioner Larson and I are all three, or had been now on the design review team. We would very much like to see that built in to a continuation or reconstitution along with key community stakeholders. I think that's going to be critical to bring all the right voices to the table. So, thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Larson.
I just wanted to add one other thing. I was looking over my comments from the last meeting and I want to carry forward and get into the minutes that you had mentioned relocation of utilities and I had mentioned undergrounding of utilities. So, I think that that's going to be one of the big keys in helping. You know, it's a, you got your depth by 1,000 cuts or you got your ascension. And one of the great things is to be able to look around you and not see more pervasive infrastructure regardless of what the utility is or the concrete or whatever. So, undergrounding utilities through Santa Barbara would be a wonderful mitigation, just a suggestion once again. But I want undergrounding utilities to be in writing somewhere along with the decorative K-rail and graffiti proofing. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
I'm the last one left. Once again, I agree with my colleagues' comments. The information that was presented, the new information on J-modified certainly is appealing in terms of far less construction. But as my colleagues have said, I just can't see putting on-ramp and off-ramp traffic on Los Potos. And Caltrans is firmly not going to allow an off, center off-ramp to remain. I do think the EIR did recognize our concerns about the aesthetics in particular. This is an entry into Santa Barbara. I hope in the planning of the construction, everything will be done possible to get the northbound off-ramp, the new northbound off-ramp in as soon as possible. The same for the new southbound off-ramp and your scheduling of how the work goes. I realize the highway itself has to be moved, so it's pretty complicated, but whatever can be done to speed up that process so we don't have the impacts of the closed off-ramps. And, oh, I also would like to somewhere see in there, or at least in the city's comments, consideration of the widening of Cabrillo under the railroad tracks so that there can be a right-turn lane onto the southbound, the new southbound off-ramp. And there would be adequate pedestrian and bicycle access under the bridge. I know that was mentioned last time, but I wanted to make sure, reemphasize that one.
All right. Well, I don't have any further comments. Thank you all, to all the staff and the public for the work you put into this. And that can, oh, no, it doesn't conclude our meeting today. That concludes that item, but we do have an administrative agenda. Mr. Hart or Mr. Eads, do you want any of these copies of the EIR and technical reports back? You don't have to.
I would suggest that you hold on to them for now and then at some point, we can take them back after the public comment period closes. If any members of the public would desire to have a copy, they could take one of these. They're local here.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. That brings us to the administrative agenda. And A is committee and liaison reports. First is the staff. Hearing officer liaison report. Commissioner Larson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have two meetings to report on. The first, I was just madly looking for the date, was two weeks ago yesterday. And there were five items. Nothing percolated up to anything that we would need to deal with. And yesterday, two items. Interestingly, in both items, hedges came up as an issue and that was, and they were from letters of, from neighbors regarding projects, but everything was approved, so there's nothing outstanding there. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other commission, committee liaison reports? There was a water commission meeting on Monday. And again, it's always impressive how much there is to do and with an aging plant, all the work that has to be done on improvements and particularly, this is something that's been worked, been worked on for quite a while, particularly improving the quality a while, particularly improving the quality of the primary treatment so that as water goes in for secondary and tertiary treatment, it's of higher quality. Right now, we are adding 80% potable water to the recycled water, the reclaimed water, because of the turbidity and mineral content. So, that is a project that's underway. They're to work on that. They're working toward an automated meter reading pilot project. And you'll be able to look at, in not very long period of time, at your utilities' use and billing and all of that online. And you'll be able to pay online as well. So, and then things are having to be changed as a result of the consent decree, which required the city to significantly up its water rate so that it, much more, wastewater rate, so it could much more quickly replace aging sewer pipe.
Okay. Anybody else? Commissioner Jordan?
Well, it's not really to report, but since you mentioned water, I have that other little board I play with, the water board. And one of my...
The regional water quality, central?
I like my, I like my technical term better.
What's the full title?
I just talked to Rebecca Bork this morning because one of the things that I'm six months behind on is I was to get more educated, both on the drinking water handling and then also sewage processes and discharges. And I knew she was the sewage person, but she's also the clean water, drinking water person too. So, anyhow, in the next three or four weeks, I'm setting up a tour of both facilities, so both the water treatment plant and also the sewage treatment plant, with an emphasis on the clean water part of what we have to do with water that comes into the system to make it drinkable, how we have to treat it, what type of contaminants are in the water that come in. And on the sewage part, focusing on what type of processes and challenges we have, both when it leaves our house to get down there and get treated, and then what the discharge challenges are when it goes out into the ocean. So, if any of you would want to, just let me know to include you on trying to schedule a tag-along with that, I'd be happy to do so.
This is when?
I don't know yet. I'm just starting the conversation. I would say over the next four weeks, we'll probably do one one time and then the other another time.
Thanks.
Sure.
Anything else? I wonder if not. That concludes the planning commission meeting for today, and the meeting is adjourned.